All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Delaware County Council Meeting, September 27th, 9:00 a.m. here in the Delaware County Commissioners' courtroom. If everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Commissioner Shannon Henry is in the room. Would you start us?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, Steve? Are you on roll call today?
You bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Present.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Ben is not here today. He had some issues with one of the kids at home not feeling good. So he's going to be watching, and he's on call if we have any questions of him today. Denise, was the meeting advertised? Agenda posted?
Yes.
Thank you. I need an approval of the agenda. Before we do that, we're going to have to move our resolution to be after the transfers. On that, just for everybody's information. So I'd need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. And next item, I would entertain an approval of the August minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Any questions, corrections, changes? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Hey, I'd like to stop here for just a minute. And past Commissioner Don Dunick passed away. And just if we could get a moment of silence for him and his family. I know they're going through a rough time right now. So everybody just please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thanks, Denise. All right, we've got a presentation to counsel under new business. Guardian Advocates Incorporated.
Good morning, counsel. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. I'm going to introduce the ones with Guardian Advocates, but I just want to give you a short background about that. Guardian Advocates approached the judges in 2021 about their program and bringing in Delaware County into the program that was already established. So we joined their program in the fall of 2021. And they are working on getting volunteers and also people that need help. They're for incapacitated adults and also elderly people that don't have anyone. So I also did not have the time to commit for volunteer. And I'll throw it out there, they always need volunteers. And it's not just for people that don't have jobs. But I just couldn't commit to that. So I committed to be on the board. So I've been on the board for a few months now. And then we just merged with Try... What's the name of that?
Area Five.
Area Five, which brought on more counties. So I've been involved since the beginning. And also, I joined the board also just because the judges wanted me to be involved since we're part of their group. So I'm going to introduce John Longnaker, who is the attorney and the one in charge of the Madison County chapter. And he'll give you a short kind of background about the program. And then he'll introduce Linda Johnson. He'll give you more about the program itself, okay? John?
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. As she said, I'm John Longnaker. I'm an attorney in Anderson, grew up there. And we formed Guardian Advocates, my wife and I, in 2019. And by the end of that year, we had secured a grant from the Indiana Supreme Court. We also had an independent working board. And now we've grown from, I think there were seven board members at that time, five volunteers and four clients, to much, much more. Our board, we're seeking volunteers to join that from particularly Delaware County and Grant County, the two counties we brought on last year. But Guardian Advocates is much like CASA. Probably most of you are familiar with that. Where volunteers are matched up with children who are going through judicial issues of their parents and other family members. We're like that in the sense that the real beauty of this program is that we match up volunteers with our clients. Now, we have a staff of social workers, attorneys, that we certainly go and we provide much of the services that are provided through a guardianship that's established by the courts. But it's the volunteers that go... We require at least monthly visits. And oftentimes, they go a couple times or some calls to visit the individuals. Now, most of our clients are in nursing homes and assisted living. Almost all of them are without family, or they have family that have victimized them. Financial exploitation, neglect, things like that. Or we have some that have family that are just too far away. They live, you know, several states away. So we become the family for our clients. We visit them, we monitor their care. And when it comes to different changes in their care, we're the ones as guardian that are called upon by the facility. We also have some clients that are in group homes and also just a couple that are still remaining home. As with all guardianships, we always try to provide the most independent setting for them and give them the greatest amount of independence for their living. We started this program based on a pilot that was in northern Indiana. That branched out to about 40 counties when we joined. Now I think we're over 50 counties in the state. And we have 20 other agencies, much like our organization, a nonprofit organization that runs the guardianship programs for Delaware County. Like Emily said, they joined us in Madison County as well as Grant County. So we have three counties since the beginning of this year. And then we're happy to report that we're going to be joining forces with our sister organization, Area Five, to add five more counties for a total of eight. But we have had individuals who were looking to go to a facility, which was a nursing home or a mental health facility. And, you know, with our intervention, with our volunteers, we've been able to change the course of their life. We have an individual that was able to live independently in an apartment. She has a kitty now. We have another client who's remained home. She is able to remain home and be with her dog that she is a joy of her life. You know, those things, if we think about the things that we take for granted, these are things that would have been taken away from these folks if we weren't able to have volunteers in our organization to intervene. At this time, I'm going to have Linda Johnson, our development coordinator, come and speak to you a little bit more about our operations and what we're looking to do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Linda.
Good morning. Good morning, council members. Thank you for letting us take a little bit of your time this morning. John and Emily, I thank you. And they both made my job easier up here. We are proud to bring this program to you. It is our heart, and it is for your most fragile people in your community. We talk a lot about not leaving a child behind. Well, these people that are incapacitated and elderly are like children. And we don't want to leave any of them behind. There are sad situations, oftentimes living in deplorable conditions, having no one to advocate for them. And the other sad, sad situations are oftentimes their families victimizing them. And then we need to step in and intervene. Sometimes we're appointed by the courts as a nonbiased entity to keep that person safe and going forward. So we do have a lot of plans. We have a lot of work ahead of us. But it again is our heart. I'm actually the director of the Area Five Guardianship Program. I started it a year ahead of John's program. We've been cohorts, if you will. And we just decided to merge together. And it will give us a lot more strength. And both of us, we can benefit by helping each other. Even though we're a big geographical area, we can still benefit from backing each other up, from sharing other staff, and still do our individual dedicated work for each of the eight counties. If you look at your little handout there that I gave you on the second page are some numbers that I point to often to kind of help you focus on Delaware County and the overall picture completely. You'll see the active clients in process are 30. And of that 30, it states nine of them are Delaware County. There's actually pending cases going that will add about six to eight more people from Delaware County. So Delaware County has very rapidly, in less than a year, grown to be as many clients as we have in Madison County and more than Grant County. We know there's people out there that need us and need the volunteer work. We're very, very thankful that your commissioners see the need for this and have pledged $10,000 for this year and $10,000 for next year to us in the county commissioners' meeting. So what we're asking you is to support that and to go with the recommendation that they have given and to spread the word. Anyone that would like to be a volunteer, we're going to get a flyer out to all the county employees and staff and see if there's more interest there. We do this every fall, just so that you have a reference. So if it would be pleasing to you and easier for your plans, you can always put us in your budget. And then there's not as much work for the paperwork to follow. I think that helps. That's what I found in other counties. We have a Supreme Court grant that we can go out and apply for, but it takes local matching dollars. And it's basically a two-to-one match. So if we raise $20,000, then we can apply for $40,000 there. So it takes your support every step of the way, and we really appreciate that. The VASIA program is the core and sets up all the code and rules and law in probate code 29. So part of that is this grant procedure. If there's any questions, I would be glad to answer them. I don't know that I need to elaborate anymore unless you've got a particular question, and I'd be glad to answer that.
Any questions from council?
Do you have a question? So hearing some of what you're saying, I appreciate you coming to the council because I have a little bit of unique insight. My wife has worked with people with disabilities for over 20 years.
Thank you.
And she's actually a member of the Muncie Delaware County People with Disabilities Board. And that was what was going to lead to my question. Do you, does your organization work with the local disabilities boards in each county? I know just from hearing her feedback that they're... Our local board is hoping to get more involved and do more things. Currently, they're pretty much just really providing information and things of that sort. They would like to be of a greater service. They have a lot of great volunteers. Reason I'm mentioning that is you had asked about volunteers and things like that. So I'm curious if you've reached out to some of these disabilities boards, and I can't speak for the other counties, to see what kind of interest would be there as far as volunteers. I know there's some that want to get on our board if there's no open seats that would probably love to help.
We would love to work with them. Anyone in those type of entities, APS, Adult Protection Service, any of the disability, any of the facilities, we love to work with. Those, we can only be stronger and better if we... It takes a village. And so if we lock arms with those type of services, we can be much stronger. So if you would, please give her my business card or share that with her. If you'd like another one, I'd be glad to. I have to say, in my five years of business, or business of experience in this, I have not met yet with a board of that such. In my five counties, no one has revealed that. Now, there are some other entities we work with that are, that there's a presence of. Like there's homeless initiatives and boards out there. There's mental health initiatives, especially of late with COVID. And we work with all those entities. But this is the first I have heard of a disability board. So please, please, have her reach out. If you want to jot down her name and phone number, I'd be glad to take it. I know we...
For you?
I know, we would love to work with her.
Yeah, that's a joint county, county, city venture. And I will pass that information on there, and I'll give you her information as well.
That'd be great.
And you have my support.
That is great. Like I said, we can only be stronger and better if we all come together. And this is a part of just making this presentation, getting our word and our name out to allow people to know that we have a presence here now. So we really appreciate it from this point. Mr. Quakenbush?
You mentioned that you're trying to get funding from the local governments. Do you have a source of funding elsewhere or from other... Do you do fund drive or anything like that?
With this being new in this county, we first typically seek out any grants, such as the Bargain Box. The Sciota Sorority has a grant process. I'm working on that right now for submission. We typically then reach out to our commissioners, our council, and then to the city council and mayor, which we are approaching soon. I think that's maybe in a week or two, that meeting. So we try to go there because working from top down, that helps us get the word out. And then we learn of these other boards and places to go. In time, as we get more established and we get more volunteers, I would love to do a fundraising activity. We've said that now for five years, and we're so small in staff. We operate with two or three. The whole concept of the VASIA program is to have few staff and have an army of volunteers to keep the costs low. So when you only have two or three staff at the start and maybe 15 volunteers, it's tricky to get those fundraising activities. But if anyone ever has something in mind, that would be a good one, particularly in Delaware County, that's... You know, you guys know the county the best. I happen to live here, and I love the county. That's the really great opportunity for me to do this sister program blending. But I'm trying to noodle on my mind here. There's a lot of churches. I'll reach out to my own church. There's a lot of places like that that we can go. But as far as a fundraising activity, I'd welcome any ideas. And we want to become sustainable. That's part of our reason for merging, in my mind. If we can have a little bigger entity and work together, we may find some ways that we can become more sustainable over time. It's difficult when you're extremely small. So did you have something in mind?
No, just in my tenure on the council, we had, we actually had a category of organizations.
Okay.
And we've had to, we've been compelled to eliminate all of those. So this is kind of coming back and asking the council to do something that in the past we had to quit doing.
Right, right.
Thinking you need to...
Yes.
Hopefully...
Branch out.
Because I get fundraiser things in the mail all the time. And some I do and some I don't, you know? Some I...
Right.
But I just, I like what you're doing, and you could be on my list.
I appreciate that because we've run into those comments and concerns around the eight counties that I've been in and out of. So another reason why for five years it's been on my head of sustainability, sustainability, get out there and make you a five-year plan. So I'm trying to do that. And I, you know, we hope to get there because we know that indefinite down the road, you guys may not be able to support us. We appreciate it now. It helps us get started for sure.
Do you have a social media presence at all?
We do have a website, guardianadvocates.com?
Inc.
Inc. Oh, yes, thank you, John. GuardianAdvocatesInc.com.
I'm just curious.
And by the way, with the two of us, you may hear us say occasionally, as we get going, east and west. In our merger concept for the start of January, Madison, Delaware, and Grant will make our east division. And then the other five counties that I'm bringing into the merger will be the west division. It's Tipton, Howard, Cass, Fulton, and Miami. So it's kind of east and west.
I was just going to ask, if you have like a social media presence, that may be content that we could share on the county Facebook page if there was material already out there.
That would be wonderful.
If you'd like our Facebook page.
You do have a social media presence, okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Very much.
There you go, mister. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we've got the review of a letter to support from Indiana-Michigan Power. And this was a letter that was sent as a request. And they were... Dr. Rob Kiesling, he's asking me to support this as the council president. And I want to make sure and get your blessing on that, I guess, to go ahead and do that. I think individually, you guys probably all receive letters on that. But I'd be looking for, I guess, a motion in a second to support this. This is for broadband.
I had sent a letter of support on my own behalf. So I would motion to support for the council to recommend you send a letter as the president.
I've got a motion.
I would second.
Second.
Got a second from Jane.
That's called the Middle Mile Grant Application Committee.
That's correct. Any other questions? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you. And we changed this originally, I think, on the... This was an introduction of the ordinance 2022-018. I talked to Ben on this, and I think what I'd like to do is... I mean, we can discuss it if you want. This is on the part-time salary on there. And I think what I'd be asking for council to do is let me work with Ben and Human Resources Department to get that in a more presentable state than we have it right now for introduction next month.
I'll move that we...
I don't think we need a motion on it necessarily. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I show it's 2022-016.
016?
This is a different... Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, we've got an updated number.
Okay.
On it. So I will have that ready for introduction next month.
Take your word for it.
016, I guess.
And then let's go ahead and do transfers next, and we'll come back to the resolution. There's a transfer, or there's a transfer... What's that?
That's the resolution. I don't think you should do it in this meeting.
Well, that's what we have done in the... Yeah, that's what we've done in the past is run it at this meeting. We can do it either way.
But if you do it in this meeting, she's going to put it in gateway, and it's not going to show up in the budget gateway. So we've always done it in budget hearings.
I mean, either way, we're doing it today, right?
Yes.
You can wait till the end, fine with me.
Okay. Well, we can go ahead and do the transfers, and then we can go ahead and do that in the budget when we reopen budget hearings. That's fine with me. So if you want to start with transfers...
2022-016 is...
Yeah, 016 is the resolution to reduce the 2022 budget. So let's go ahead with transfers. Who's reading today?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, starting off with Circuit Court and County General, 138. D-140, pretrial screening analysis, negative 1,0082. 441, office equipment, positive 1,0082, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard? All right. Questions from council? Want to talk to us real quick on that?
Sure. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. I don't know if you remember, we replaced all of our panic buttons. And then we upgraded from analog to digital. I thought I had all the bills for that, paid them. And then a bill showed up on my desk about a month ago. And somehow, it never got to me. So this is that last of that, to pay that. It was the $1,800 for, I think, part of the upgrade. It just never got to me.
Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Communications, 124. A-114, Communication Tech, negative 2,000. B-113, Communication Tech, negative 5,000. B-124, Communication Tech, negative 2,500. B-128, Communication Tech, negative 4,000. B-132, Communication Tech, negative 6,000. C-107, Communication Tech, negative 4,000. D-130, Communication Tech, negative 1,000. E-122, Communication Tech, negative 5,000. G-123, Communication Tech, negative 6,000. J-108, Communication Tech, negative 4,000. 194 Training, positive 4,000. 196 Overtime, positive 29,750. 231 Maintenance Supplies, positive $750. 312 Professional Cleaning, 1,000, positive 1,500. 351 Utilities, positive $2,000. 391 Dues and Subscriptions, positive 1,500. This is a total transfer of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
Getting there, aren't you?
No questions. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next is EMS, 155. We have A-182 Paramedic, negative 17,744.57. B-182 Paramedic, positive 17,744.57, total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council?
I do have a comment.
Okay.
Megan Cattito, EMS Office Manager. So the number is going to change. And there's a couple changes that are going to be involved with us. So I don't know if you feel it better for me to address all the changes now or if you want me to come up as I come up on the agenda.
Is this number going to change?
Uh huh.
It is?
Yes.
All right.
So this number is going... So from A-182 to B-182, the number is now going to be 8,494.92.
Still zero?
The difference?
Well, yes, because the remainder of that is gonna go somewhere else. So I don't know if you want me to just go ahead and talk about all these changes now.
Do it as you go.
Do it as we go.
Want to do it in order? Okay, that's what I thought you.
I mean, she gave us the numbers on this one. I say we stay in order, and then when we get to the next one, she can address it again to make sense out of it with the, with it in the latter.
So we need to do amendment and.
Either that, or you guys can withdraw your motion and your second, and then we'll redo that at the new amount.
I'll withdraw.
I'll withdraw.
And I'll motion at the new amount.
I'll second at the new amount.
Okay, and just for clarification, that new amount is 8,49492?
Yes.
And that's a minus on.
A.
A-182 and a plus on B-182?
Yes.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to Other. Ball Brothers Grant, High Tech Crimes Unit, 9214 is that number that goes along with that fund name. And we are looking at 393, Training, positive 5,000, 47458. 441, Forensic Software, negative 5,000. 442, Computers, negative 47458, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. I don't see him here today, but he was in.
I'm here.
Oh, you're in here? You're here, okay. Well, you may want to step up and just clarify what we're doing here for council. This was approved, and all of these were approved in Finance Committee that are on this agenda.
From what I understand, he's just moving it from Training because he needs some software and additional for computers. Just putting it in Training. Yeah, see, maybe you should've came for him instead of me.
Any questions from council? We've got a motion and a second on that, okay. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Statewide 911, which is Fund 1222. We have 105, CAD Coordinator, negative 8,000. 197, Overtime, positive 8,000, total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Bridge, 1135. C-111, Payroll Clerk, negative 2,71059. D-111, Payroll Clerk, positive 2,71059, total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was a tie. All right. Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from council? This is partially out of Bridge, partially out of Highway.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Anything else you want to add?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, all right. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Highway Department, 1176. C-111, Payroll Clerk, negative 15,718. D-111, Payroll Clerk, positive 15,718 and 80 cents. D-127, Truck Driver, negative 27,312. E-127, Truck Driver, positive 27,312. C-131, Truck Driver, negative 12,53434. D-131, Truck Driver, positive 12,53434. C-135, Truck Driver, negative 26,47928. D-135, Truck Driver, positive 26,47928, total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council?
Yes, real quick, you said, could you elaborate? This is all new truck drivers, right?
Yes, so one of them started, I believe, November, December. He left in August for another job. We had one that started in July, left in August for another job. Actually, both of them were August and, or July and left in August.
Well, hopefully, get some new veterans in there.
Two of them left for more money. The other one just went back to his old job.
Well, just real quick while you're up there, I seen the situation yesterday with a contracted group with the paint, and I want to say good job to you guys for getting on that immediately and rectifying that. I know, I mean, I thought maybe you guys had Tommy out there with a paintbrush, but either way, good job identifying that quickly and getting it rectified to get it fixed.
It is gonna get fixed. We talked to him this morning for probably an hour and a half this morning, and, but I want to get it out on social media so everyone would know, we did not do that, you know, and I appreciate you sharing on your page, too.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna get corrected.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that covers Transfer One. We have the addendum. The updated addendum includes changes from Thursday.
Okay, starting out with County General Commissioners, which is 153. 172, perf, negative 40,000. 173, Health Insurance, negative 140,000. 325, Utilities, 100, positive 180,000, total zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb.
We knew this was coming.
Yeah, this is what we were talking about right in the budget meeting when we was talking about wanting to know how we're gonna get it paid.
Yes.
Here's how we're doing it.
All right, any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, EMS, 155. We have B-146, Paramedic. This number is gonna change, both these numbers are going to change. It's going to increase from the 10,61867. The new number is 13,040.77. So we have a negative 13,040.77 on B-146, and C-146, Paramedic, will be a positive 13,040.77 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, also EMS, 155. We have A-178, negative 2,8748. We have B-182, negative 11,37338. C-116, negative 1,0052750. F-118, negative 12,8104. 196, Overtime, positive 28,58940.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, Circuit Court, 138. We have C-140, Pretrial Screening Analysis, negative 2,500. 310, Court Website, positive 2,500 for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Go, Ms. Jane.
The one?
Jane.
Okay.
Need to fight. He can see this.
Jessica.
All right. Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter.
Always conceived.
Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications, which is 124. 173, Health Insurance, negative 6,000. 441, Miscellaneous Equipment, positive 6,000, for a total of zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
It's, Fred, this is the.
Yeah, so.
You're needing, right?
When I went into Finance, my original plan was to give back $100,000 out of health insurance, which is on the resolution you have today. They, Finance asked me to change that to 94,000 and actually do the transfer for the copier instead of an additional appropriation, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. All right. Ready for County General?
Ready.
You ready?
Okay. All right, on to Financials. County General, first up, Communication, 124. Oh, I'm so sorry, that's the one that was withdrawn. That $6,000, we just discussed that. It's on the addendum now, and the appropriation's been withdrawn. Sheriff, 129. We have 444, Doors, for a positive $363, total $363.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council?
What are we doing with Doors?
This is actually coming from the Drug Task Unit's Interdiction Account that they have money in. Their key fobs and the electronic door units weren't working correctly, so we have to repair them. So we pulled the money from their line, and they're paying for the repair.
Sure. Thank you.
Little warty on that stuff.
Well, we're in there two years now, so.
Been that long?
Yep.
Any other questions from council?
If this is a repair, it shouldn't be coming out of the fourth quarter.
That's right.
That's telling, that's telling me they're buying new doors for the $363. I wondered what they were buying for $363. They're just repairing the doors.
We just rolled it from their, their funds, and we just.
You're asking for additional preparation out of County General.
I asked for it out of their fund. That's what I was talking to you about that day in the office. I didn't know exactly how to write it up. So I had asked you how, how to put it on that appropriation. It's pulling from their fund, which has to be appropriated. It's money they get back in seizures. So I needed to appropriate it out of their fund so that we could put it over somewhere so I could spend it. And that's what this was for, was to, for their office repairs.
What she's saying is, though, is that the County General.
It just needs a different number.
The category in County General, even if you pay it out, County General needs to be a 300 number rather than a 400, because 400 are capital improvements. It's not a capital improvement, it's a repair of a capital improvement.
Well, I mean, it was published so it can be changed.
I was just curious.
Yeah, we can just change your account number. I understand, I couldn't imagine buying a door for 300.
Okay, according to the chief, it's actually not a repair, it's a replacement of a whole new system. They're taking out the fob system and putting in a whole new locking device, is what they're doing. So the fob system's been removed.
Okay, then that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't for repair of the doors, replacing for the security.
Of the whole device, yeah.
Okay.
All good? Anna? Okay. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. We did get a motion and a second on that one, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And Webb. Yep. Okay, on to other. ARP, American Rescue Plan, 8950. Start with 317 Yorktown, $1 million. 328 Delaware County Volunteer Fire Department, 50,000, positive $50,000. I'm sorry, the other one was positive as well. 323 Administration Fees, positive $2 million. 329 DCCC, which is Community Corrections, have positive $100,000. 330 Salem Township, positive $500,000. 331 West Dell, positive $500,000. 332 County Housing Development Infrastructure, $2.5 million, positive. 333 Shell Building Infrastructure, $270,000. 334 Broadband, positive 1,420,724. We have a total of 8,340,724. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Morning Shannon and Jenny, you guys were in at the Finance Committee and kind of went through an explanation of, of what these were and, and I'd asked you to maybe come to counsel and kind of give that explanation to counsel.
Sure. So I was gonna have Brad and Bill here, they're, some of these projects are things that they're working on and they're both out of town. Although I think the wedding's, Brad's wedding's canceled in Florida, so they're, they're coming back, I think. So that's a kind of a bad situation with the hurricane. But anyway, let's go over these, the Yorktown, $1 million. That's been in and out of the project a couple of different times and we've discussed that, I think, with you guys a few times. Yorktown had, I think they had tried to get grant money and whatnot, so we pulled out of the plan before, but that was unsuccessful, so it needs to go back in. But this is a water and sewer project that they're gonna develop the north side of 332 out there at, at the industrial park. And this is to get water and sewer under 332. And I know, I mean, dollars sounds like a lot, but to bore under four lanes of highway plus two different locations, because you can't send water and sewer in the same hole across the highway, so they'll have to be separated, they gotta be so far apart, so many few part. But anyway, that's that project. The Delaware County Fire Department's project is the Delaware County Fire Chiefs Association, which includes all the fire departments, had come to the Commissioner, Commissioners Meeting. They'd requested, because of some of the 911 upgrades, they'd requested some upgrades. They're gonna do, I believe, iPads and five licenses to get, get them started. Some of them have more than five trucks, so some of them are gonna purchase extra iPads and licenses. But this will get each volunteer fire department in Delaware County started with some of the new 911 upgrades that Fred's been working on. So this is something that's been needed for a long time. A lot of the volunteer fire departments are just, when they get dispatched, they hear the dispatcher's voice and that's all they get. There's no kind of computer rated dispatch, dispatching. So this will be a great upgrade for the local volunteer fire departments. Administrative fees, $2 million, up to 10% of the plan. Can go towards administrative fees, anytime anyone does any, any work for us with the plan, of course, they charge. And they're also kicked around the idea, this, since the federal government included this 10% in the plan, at some point, will they come in and audit and charge us $2 million? I don't know. So, but anyway, that's, that's part of the administrative fees. The DCC, Community Corrections, $100,000 is gonna go for programs, educational work and some domestic violence classes and things like that. So that's part of DCC. The Salem Township, 500,000, that's for Overlook Drive. That's 11 homes apparently that is in an area above the river and their septics are not good, so they're gonna run wastewater through there and I believe also that will include a lift station. The West Dell, 500,000, that's part of a, a program that, a project that Bill and Brad have been working on. That's to get water and sewage to West Dell School from Gaston. And I know West Dell School has a package wastewater plant that needs updated every few years. It's time to get updated and they feel like it would be better, money better spent to just go ahead and run the line from the town of Gaston out to the schools. And again, that's probably been needed for quite some time. So that will, that will benefit West Dell Schools. Community Housing Development Infrastructure, you know, we got these businesses that are coming to Delaware County and we're very grateful for that and Brad and Bill's worked hard on that. We're getting ready to take another trip overseas, go talk to 12 more companies that want to come locate in Indiana. But this, housing development is, it's approximately 80 acres, 170 homes. Out, it's out between 67 and Daleville Road area. It's in the county. However, that, that is for water and sewage to, to, to take care of that housing development. We've been working with Tom Fauch, our building commissioner, you know, and if you talk to Tom, Tom will tell you the need for housing and I think we've hit on it several times too, the need for housing in Delaware County. If you talk to the realtors, they don't have the, the bank of homes, properties available in Delaware County like they always have in the past. Now maybe that'll come back since prices are the way they're getting now, but we've, we've discussed it, Scott. I mean, you can, you know that. But we need, we need homes and that's what that 2.5 million is, is for the infrastructure. In some counties up to the north, what they're doing is they're actually putting in infrastructure for housing developments. And then as people buy the lots, a portion of that money goes back to the county. I, I don't know that we're gonna do it in this case, but it's something that we've been looking at again with Tom Fauch. Tom's helped us with that, so. But that's what that is. Shell Building Infrastructure, 270,000. That's a little four acre lot we have out off 69 and that's to run water and sewage back to that four acres. And then the, the broadband, the 1.4 million in broadband. Everybody's approaching us about broadband, of course, during COVID. It was a problem for, for children to live out in the county to, and, and, and people that was working from home to get on internet, had no internet service. So we drive around, just Albany even, and you know, people are sitting in McDonald's parking lot and stuff like that trying to work and their kids are trying to do homework during COVID. So it's, it's broadband, we got to work on broadband. We have to work on that, it's very important. Is there any questions?
I guess I have.
No, you can go ahead, Jessica.
Thank you. So on topic with the broadband, obviously approved that letter for Scott to send out, for the application for AEP to work on their program. Are you working with Rob and AEP then to try to do?
We've also sent a letter, as you guys have. So yeah, we're working with Rob and we've also worked with AT&amp;T. We've worked with several different companies, given us ideas and prices to get it in areas throughout the county. You know, back about five or six years ago, Frontier had been going around to the small towns and they tried to get contracts signed to put their tower, their antennas on water towers. And I know Albany signed a contract and I think some small towns did here in, in the county, but it never happened. And then, I don't know if you saw where there was some kind of lawsuit and some other things going on with that particular company, but yeah, we've, we constantly work on this broadband since COVID especially.
I know, when we went on that trip to DC in 19, we spoke with Senator Todd Young for quite some time on getting broadband. So I'm, I mean, I hate that we had to go through a COVID period to get some funding, but I'm glad to see that we're finally getting to a point where those underserved portions of our community are finally going to have that opportunity if everything pans out correctly.
I think there'll be more money coming down too with the Build Back Better Plan that, I haven't seen that plan in depth, but with that plan, I think that also provides funding federally for broadband. So hopefully the state will jump on that and shoot more money this way.
That'd be great.
I think some of the discussion we had in Finance Committee was that this, this money would be, would be used, but there would be other monies from, from the state in other areas that would, would, would go into this to help.
It's very expensive. With one company we talked to in an area that we was looking at, they were gonna serve one house, I think was five or $10,000 for one house. Now that sounds like a lot, but, and I, I kinda, I didn't agree with that when I started figuring the, the total numbers of houses that would benefit from it and the cost. But then if you start looking at any poles they have to put up, the line they have to run, you kind of look at that and you're like, well, yeah, maybe, maybe it is $10,000 a house.
Most of that underground?
I'm sorry?
Is most of that underground?
You know, I, I don't know if, I, I think Randolph County is, is doing a lot with their windmill monies and I think a lot of theirs is underground. They're running a lot underground over Randolph County, but their, Randolph County's doing their whole county.
A lot of it's fiber optics.
Yeah.
Lines and things like that, so that would be underground.
Yeah.
So with the, the water for the shell building? I'm a big fan of the shell buildings. I think they're great for, for the county as far as for, for development, economic development. This is, is there a plan? Obviously, you gotta get the water and sewage ran first. Is there a plan already in place to erect the shell building? Or is it just getting prepped?
We have several different plans for several different shell buildings. Thing of is you get companies, small companies come in, startup companies that need a place and then you have large companies that say, hey, we need a 100,000 square foot building. So we have different plans for different areas. We have, we have a plan out in the industrial park for some ground out there that we do not own, but is available for sale. So we have several different plans that we're looking at. Currently, right now, we don't have any buildings. There's no, we sold the last one, thank God. That one was, we had it for a while and the way it was structured, I didn't care for, but.
The other question. I seen, I read something this morning, it kind of threw me off. I know there's a lot of tight restrictions on how the money could be spent, majority water, sewer, broadband, things like that. I know that, that, maybe I read this wrong, but I thought I read that cities replacing their elevators with ARP money. Has, has the restrictions changed on how we can use the money at all?
The restrictions have changed from the beginning. However, the county still can't, we still can't use ours for roadways. But I think like the city is different. I think the city can use like some of their money for roadways. So I think there's a lot of variations depending on the size of city you are, town.
Oh, okay.
It's county, so there's.
So there's kind of different rules a little bit, it's not all blanket?
No.
Okay, all right.
It's not blanket, the rules are different for everything. We, we have used some for infrastructure repairs, but I mean, we're using some, some of ours for that.
All right, thanks.
I have a question and a comment. The question is, on that $2 million, you said that the 10% was required to be set aside.
Bradman fees.
And yet, if you don't use all of that, does it go back to the feds or does, can you reappropriate?
I'll be honest with you, I think, I don't know that we'll use all that, but if one of these other projects come in maybe a little higher or we need some more in one of these other projects, that would be a spot where we could pull from.
And you wouldn't be asked to pay it back, you hope?
Yeah.
My comment is, I, I'd like to vote yes on most of this, but I had a lot of colleagues during my lifetime that were in the home building business and the developing business and I actually spent an entire day, six feet in the ground in front of the Yorktown High School running a jackhammer to take nine yards of concrete away from a 12 inch water main so I could run that main a half a mile to my subdivision. The government didn't pay for that for me. They didn't pay it for my friends across the street that, that developed another subdivision and hooked onto what we had already installed. They paid to hook onto that 12 inch cast iron. The golf course down on River Road hooks into that. The sewers that run from along White River were put in by the town with a grant. But we still had to, as developers, hook into that sewer and, and the cost went to the lot owners, the people we sold the lots to. I, I can't agree with the government doing what you're talking about doing out there at Daleville. I just, I don't want to vote no, but I can't vote yes for that project.
I understand what you're saying. When I sat on the council of the town of Albany, you know, I, I get what you're saying. But we also didn't have ARP funds available that were designed to put in infrastructure.
The odds are though, that's not gonna be a local developer that's coming in and build those houses, because that's a problem in this county right now. You hardly have any local builders anymore, they're all out of business. We're all out of business. Every one of us, we're out of it, we're gone. We've got TK at Yorktown, who is a local guy and a family that are doing fine. But I know very few other, I know one local builder's building Geist Reservoir. I mean, it's just, there's no incentive for the local individual to even build a new home in this town. That's why, for this county, that's why you're not getting the builders. The Builders Association is defunct?
Well, I, I spoke with builders who don't wanna, don't wanna spend the money for the infrastructure.
Well, that's their problem. I had to do it and so did a lot of my colleagues.
Well, I understand, but again, you didn't have ARP money available either.
When I asked, I asked a question similar to that, Rod, and, and the question, the way it was explained to me is, it's kind of like an economic development incentive, you know, if we do the infrastructure and they take care of the roads and the sidewalks, it's almost as an incentive to lure the builders.
I've got a farm out on West Jackson, how much you gonna give me to run the sewer and the water to it?
How many acres is it? Acres is it?
I've got 49 acres.
The 49 acres?
Yeah, clear ground, I've got woods and a creek.
Are you willing to sell?
No, I don't want to sell it. Gonna go to my kids.
Well, and then Shannon, you did make a comment earlier that there is an opportunity that some other counties are having when people build, that their, some of those funds could come back if that was something we were looking into.
Yes, we are looking at that.
So that takes.
Again, our building commissioner, Tom Fauch, is the one that, that had went to a seminar and heard about that and spoke with people and, and so we, we have made contact with those individuals too.
So there's a way to get some of that money back, Ron, potentially?
I'm just gonna vote no.
All right.
Well, if you could, yeah, if you could pursue that, if you could.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, we definitely will.
Yeah, if you're able to get at least enough of that money back to start something else.
Absolutely.
It makes more sense if we can, if we can leverage that a little bit.
Absolutely, it does.
Same thing on the broadband, and I think that's the intent is to, I mean, this is the amount of money that you guys are putting forward, but you know, to leverage that to get more, more done, I think is the intent of what the state's trying to do and, and us as well.
Well, and just, just so everybody knows, too, as soon as the utilities get put in and we get that all started, there will be requests for proposals sent out. So any local builder that wants to look at those RFPs and send one back, we'd love to, we'd love to hear from them.
Yeah, we're definitely seeing a need, a need over in that area. I mean, I can verify that for sure. I mean, there's definitely a need in that area for, for homes there. We're, we're seeing increases in homes over on the, the south side out by where the new development, the new Can Pack and, and some of the other jobs that are coming in out there already are, are driving prices up and now we're seeing, you know, interest rates increase. I think the Fed increased another three quarters of a percent. So I don't know where we're gonna be in a month or two with the way things are going and, and nobody can predict that, but, but there's definitely a need right now for housing over in that area and they're buying up the housing stock as quickly as it's the market. So still, even with the increase in the interest rates. Any other questions from counsel? All right, we're ready for roll call, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
I'm gonna vote in respect for people like Mr. Lane and Mr. Holloman and Mr. Stanton and Mr. Tucker and Mr. Parsons and a whole bunch of others of us that developed land in this community and built homes over the past, and you can just go out and look. And when I was a county commissioner, I came in office, McGary Road was two lane from Broadway to the bypass and it was two lane to 600 West. When I left, it was four lane from the bypass to the interstate. In eight years, we did that. The reason it wasn't finished is because the county council shut the commissioners ahead of us off. But we did use what's called revenue sharing. So I admire you for doing what you're doing with some of this money, but I can't support something that's traditional in most all communities. The developers and the people that are local came together and, and look how many houses are built out there in Lane Crest and Holman Village and Country Village. And, and you know, I built a 98 block subdivision, which was rather small. But we all did it on the skin of our teeth and the seat of our pants and the sweat of the brow. So my vote is no.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, I will say too, I, I want to thank Tommy for jumping on that little paint job yesterday. He called me right after I got off the phone with an individual who called me and I kind of lost my mind on Tommy, so. Tommy apologized.
Yeah, that's okay.
So there, that was a subcontractor that we had hired, but.
I have a comment about that. I, I think, I wish our attorney was here because I know there have been people in government that have gotten themselves in some, some pickles by using their private computers or private whatever you want to call what you do on the internet, Facebook or whatever it is, your page. Our, we start attorney could hear to comment on whether you should be doing that or not. I, I don't think you should be commenting about the work of the highway department on your private, whatever you call it. I don't do that stuff. I think that the county government has a, a page that people could go to, that's where it ought to be.
Well, that's, that's actually the page I shared, it was from the county government. County government page and I just shared it, so it'd get more eyes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It brings back memories of when some, it seemed, seemed like when something like that happens with the painting out there, it's like somebody hijacked the paint truck and took off.
Well, right, right away, people think the, our employees.
Exactly.
The county employees went out and did that and they're subcontractor and we just, we have to try now to, to get it fixed and I'm sure Tommy will.
Yep. Thank you. All right, next.
Okay. Elected official training, Fund 1217, 395 schooling auditor, positive $2,000 for a total of $2,000. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from counsel? Just FYI, this is the recent schooling that you guys were at this last week, is that right?
And for upcoming.
And for upcoming, okay. Any other questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
EMS overtime replacement, 4930, 196 overtime, positive $12,500 for a total of $12,500.
Before you approve this, let me, no changes here? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
Yes.
Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
EMS capital improvements, Fund 4910, 441 ambulance, three chassis, positive $128,289 for a total of $128,289.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council?
That just, that number just staggers me because that's more than it used to cost to buy a whole new ambulance.
News about $250,000 now. Aluminum went up 300%. So we're going to use our, reuse our aluminum.
Aluminum frame, aluminum box.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Public defender supplemental, 1200, 185 COVID case backlog bonus. This number is changed from 555. It is now positive 52,500 for a total of 52,500.
Move to approve?
Second.
A motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from council? Want to explain that?
Yes. The attorneys that we have relied upon through the COVID backlog, when the courts were not able to have trials and things like that, we've lost our attorneys. So the current attorneys, and a few that have quit, that hung in there and went and took over attorneys in other cases in other courts, coming out there on days they're not scheduled to and spending a whole other day out there. For the ones that are still there, we, out of our supplemental funds, we wanted to give them a $3,000 bonus, and that is 40% reimbursable. And we have enough money in our supplemental fund to do this, and we did clear this with the state public defender commission. And they said that it was reimbursable and that they okayed the expense and, in fact, encouraged it because they know the kind of shape our public defenders office has been in and have been trying to help us. So it's a one-time thing because otherwise it has to be or we don't get reimbursed if we tried to do it again. So we just wanted to say thanks to the guys who have been working, who generously have agreed to increase their salaries. This is our thanks to them for getting us through, getting these cases distributed and taken care of and being on that grind. Of course, we lost Don, so we were a full slate, but sadly, we're not anymore. So that's why I could decrease that fund request amount. But we've got someone else in the wings for, in anticipation of the new salary. So we're very, we're getting there.
So just to clarify, these are $3,000 bonuses?
Yes.
Right, for each public defender?
Yes.
So to recognize the work for the COVID backlog?
Yes.
What the finance committee decided?
I don't know that we... Yeah, I think, I think we were, okay, I don't have it marked as, well, actually, let me look back here on...
I left my notes before I went in the car, but I didn't think we had really objected to anything.
I think the finance committee did approve it. It's not a formal action, but...
All right. Recommendation, all right?
Yep.
Because isn't this, you said it's reimbursable, right? Or like 40%?
The 40% reimbursable.
And there's plenty of money remaining in that fund.
Yep.
Any other questions for council? Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Supreme Court grant, 8108. We have 393 travel and training, positive 5,680. 395 incentives and recognition, positive 3,520. 396 drug screens, positive 2,400 for a total of $11,600.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Was that, that first amount, was that 5,680?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I have a question on this, Scott. It says 11,600, but my records show only 10,000 in the account.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just saw...
Yeah? You got one.
Sitting here waiting, bringing in every one of them. Don't say anything yet.
I'm making sure I was reading it right.
We have a deposit slip that it's in there. I think it needs to be moved.
Yeah, they presented that at the finance committee meeting.
Yes.
As we discussed that.
It's in there.
So what is the total, then?
11,600.
No, I mean, for like the account, I guess it's...
This is what we have that was deposited on August 19th, $11,600. Delaware County receipt.
Well, but it shows you had a total 21-6, but 11-6 has been previously additionally appropriated.
This one did not have money left over on it, correct?
I think you just recently got one.
Yes.
I didn't have time to check.
We have, I have the letter.
How much did you guys deposit recently?
Do you know this deposit?
Can you show Donna that receipt? I had that in, because that was something that we talked about in the finance committee meeting.
Yeah. It shows the money's been pulled out.
I don't remember talking about it.
I've got to teach Tanya that. Sorry.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm just proud, I am just very proud of you.
Boaking clocks right twice a day.
You guys should look at those, and I have to sit here and say, anybody want to look at that?
We've been looking at them better in the past year.
I'm proud of you.
Actually, we have been discussing them.
Yeah, we don't all get the credit like Webb.
I know.
Finally pointed it out.
Yeah, we should have increased the revenues on our financials.
Okay.
Any other questions for council? Roll call, please, Steve. Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Move to approve finan... Oh.
Are we all good? Denise, nothing else?
Nope, that's it.
All right.
Just double checking.
Here we go. Move to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from council? Roll call, please. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Let's take a quick five-minute recess. I want to check with our attorney on this resolution and make sure we're okay to move that to our budget meeting. Can we move?
Yeah, I mean, just in letter of support.
You know what I mean.
I heard it was bad.
I just wanted to check with you on that resolution.
You're saying, well, but no, but they're, the money, yeah.
That's what Donald said, that we don't do that in this meeting. We do it in the budget.
It's a general fund.
You know I did.
It is because he's the advocate. See, he's making it his personal project. See, I had the same problem with Gary Carmichael when I was a commissioner on the design of this jail. We spent a week in Colorado learning all about how to design a jail, capacity and all that stuff. Gary overrode the commissioner, gee, the architects. And then the city backed out, and they just designed it like an old-fashioned jail. Yeah, 20 years later, it's in the drink. Yeah. What are they doing about the top? Yeah. Yeah, it's a pit, it's a pit, yeah. No, they built it, they built it, it's a full building.